I'd like to call this regular board of Columbia's Selectmen and meeting. The 18th and 19th, 12/30. First thing we're going to do is go over, I see we have one or two people on. This is a hybrid meeting, pending until those who are in line. One thing is to be respectful, to talk about different things. Talking all the time, as I said, you can do tonight. And then respectful. Anybody who's on duty, if you ask to leave, you're on mine. And if you get away with that, you just put it off. If you got there, you never do that. I'd say this, please join in Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions, to flag United States of America, to the republic which stands unafraid, and has the liberty of the US as well. I've been asked to add some additions to the agenda that was pointed out. One of them is under appointments, we have a new buyer. So I need to approve the agenda of the following additions on the Section 9. appointments and resignation. 9.5 is the appointment of Cynthia Batto, a federal freshman. 9.6, appointment of Louie, the former staff. Discussion. So I move the regular meeting minutes, I move to approve the votes, like the regular meeting minutes for April 18th, 12/30. We have to do that up here. Move in favor. Audience, citizen, anybody who has something to say that's not on the agenda? Go to the chat. There's none of the one.
Yes, sir.
What's your name and address, please?
Daniel Conover.
Yep.
So I'm going to say hi. You guys would be here.
Everybody. Hi, Daniel.
Hey.
New resident, you showed up to a board of selectmen. People have been here for, I don't know. Thank you for coming, Dan.
Thank you very much.
You just threw me off, then, right? All business, discussion regarding sidewalks, walk paths from Lake Road to the town center. So, I guess we'll kind of open this up. Just earheaded it. You want to start? And you'll give us your name and then... Okay. Thank you. Are you guys going in on that first subject?
Well, we're starting from 8:00 or 8:10. To do this, um, I'm going to show these, these seven day, uh, welcome program. We're managing, and we're doing it. Just to look at this. It was something that... Okay. Captain, I've heard of the one man. Not to mention, is it... If there are people out there that are waiting, there's been safety issue.
Okay.
Sure, the sand age, I figured you'd be there. It's, um, I'd like to point out that sidewalks, you're going outside here. Now, that happens to happen. It also can blow off public, but that can only do a lot of beauty, of traffic. Center here, Viper, this is, so it's not a major event. That happens to happen. Steven, 188, we're 87. I have upstairs in 2013. We just moved in full time recently. Walkability is a key factor whenever you look at property. In addition, say, as Sherry mentioned, it's true everywhere, traffic's very fast. It's also very fast on 87. It's difficult sometimes, we live on 87, so it's difficult sometimes to pull out. We have a ride the way on 87. We manage, but, you know, towns get reputations. And if you drive through a town really fast, people know it. And if they can't track through a town really fast, people know that too. I don't know what reputation of home is in terms of public safety and law enforcement, but certainly I vote for whatever the law enforcement has in terms of the state trooper. And I've seen them on the roads and trying to do a good job. I know it's a difficult task, but in terms of the safety, even if we have a walkway, which would be wonderful, and I'd be, I'm fully supportive, I like to walk. I'd also like to have some effort to slow down traffic. In whatever way possible, state signs, those flashing signs, more troopers, you know, just so we can get a bit safer. If we do get a chance to walk down the road on the path, right now it's on the side of the road. As Sherry said, or someone said, you do see mothers with babies pushing their shores. They just want to get out, and they're stuck, and these little lanes are... And on Lake Road, on one side, there's almost no lane to walk. You have to cross over, which is fine, but, so attention to that, or at least, you know, respectful request that, attention to the police, patrolling the town. Maybe the town needs a red action, you can drive through your own best. And you can drive through another town, that's fine, they're not here.
Well, you kind of covered two issues there, so...
I'm leaving the safety part of the...
Yeah, I understand it. I'm not sure sidewalks would slow down any traffic, help with the safety, give it help when people get off of, off the road and stuff. Mark, you have some information? You looked into this?
Yes, the application, it's called the Connected Drive Transportation Community Connectivity Grant Program. And the grant applications due July 21st of this year. So there'd be no way that we could possibly apply this year. But the grant would offer 100,000 to 800,000 in funding. And costs associated with activities such as engineering, right-of-way negotiations, acquisitions, any utility relocations, or public involvement would be the responsibility of the municipality. The 800,000 to 800,000 for the sidewalk program would strictly go to construction. And applications are not funded every year, they're every two years, contingent upon funds being available. So you have to engineer the project, get public input. The application process requires a whole list of readiness to proceed, a complete street program, a complete street policy, and an ADA transition plan for the sidewalk system. So there'd be a lot of engineering involved. But it would have to be, what I would want is public hearings on it, that the town is behind it, not what happened in 2009 where the grant went forward, got the money, and then the town goes against it. So it'd be a lot of work to get to that point.
What's the, may I ask, what complete street is the, I mean, that sounds like
It would...
A whole program that you now have to like map out the whole town.
I'd have to, I'd have to check with CROG or Council of Governors. I believe our planner there would help us with this. And our planner within Columbia who does have experience in this area. I would consult with him as well. But I don't know, that's a long stretch. And I don't know also if the participation in the grant is different on the state highway versus a local municipal street. I'd have to check that through Council of Governors.
Actually, I saw this young lady right here, Mary.
I love the young, thank you.
I know. My wife tells me I shouldn't say that, but I'm sorry, but, name and address.
Hi, I'm 34, during, I certainly want to be here to support Sherry and improve to people who are speaking respective to Lake Road. I'm not sure this question would be answered in or the comment I'm about to make is appropriate to you, that could go on your business at some point in time. I recall George Murphy, who was the Director of Public Works, when they were putting in guardrails or guide rails on, or down the road, stating that they had received a grant and they were going to put behind the guide rails so that we would have safety because people were walking on curves. There were two very bad curves down the county road heading towards the end of it. That they were, had money and materials and were ready to put a bridge in, and that were going behind what we call, or Downey Road Dyke, it's a little bit down the road from the beach. And that never happened. And obviously, we have the new regime, we have a new Director of Public Works. Was that grant, is that part of a bigger plan?
Yeah, let me address that. I believe that we put money aside for that, we appropriated the funds for it. The owner of the property refused to allow us to put it there.
Oh.
So, you know, Lake, I mean, or Downey Road, I understand that. It's our road, we could do what we wanted, and the most, the funds were appropriated. We could not get permission. But I understand that. I understand that, so, yeah.
Okay, so, I'll make a second comment. There are two curves. If the owner, and I believe there would be, I don't know if you call it eminent domain or an ability to utilize part of something off the street, say a shoulder, if the owner refuses, could, is there any recourse that we have, number one? Number two, the second curve, the owner of that property would be more than willing to work with the town to put a sidewalk in, because I'm the owner. And from that curve, at 17 or Downey to 19 or Downey, which is all wetlands, you could easily put a sidewalk in and feel safe.
But it's all wetlands.
It's all wetlands.
Now I have to go through wetlands.
Great, I'm on wetlands, I'm happy to help.
Okay. I understand, and thank you very much. Are you happy to find? But, you know, and yes, I'll, I'm going to, I'll talk to all these things, yeah.
So I just have a question about, Sherry, very similar. I have a question about how much of the land from the street
State owned?
Yeah, is state or town owned? And I understand that people have concerns and that those need to be addressed. And we're very much all about like compromise, but, you know, public safety and, and the fact that that part of the road isn't owned by people, why, why can't, I mean, shouldn't there be like a need for public safety might be greater than the need for somebody to not want it near their house? I, I mean, that just...
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody said anything about, you know, we're just discussing it now. So I get it, I get, listen, when I see the young lady with her stroller with one in the back, one in the front, and walking, one walking in front of her, I cringe every time. Absolutely. I wish she wouldn't walk on there.
But I wish she could, I mean, I think she should be, that's my feeling. Anyways, but...
I wish she could too.
I was listening to the explanation of the three. And I believe that last time we tried this, we had a different three. It was called Safe Way to School. And I believe that paid off. The inch here, the plant, the tree.
And yet the town still didn't want it.
And the construction. I'm just saying that perhaps if the town decided to do this, they could look into a grant that covered more of the blocks. And
Yeah.
Mansfield put a safe way to school sidewalk in from Mansfield Center down to the, their new school. And I got involved with that because it went, I'm just trust me. And I had to attend all of those meetings. And they just, they just said, you, you need to give us some amusement. And that's, and that's how it went. But it was a state, a little, and I'm just saying, there were other avenues.
And I will tell you, we, Mark and I, and Jen, we look for anybody else's money to do anything in time. Grants, we absolutely do scour, so we absolutely will take a look at that. So let me just, this is obviously something we're going to have to continue to look at. We're going to have to look into some of the grants that are out there. We're going to have to get in touch with the state, talk to them. And the state never says, oh yeah, just go ahead. I don't know how Mansfield did, but we'll have to inquire about that. I'd love to see, to be honest with you, I'd love to see maybe more people or a petition. I know that was brought up by another selectman. And then we will have to have town meetings and stuff. I will say this, there's a lot of roads in Columbia that would like the speed to go down. We pay a lot to the state trooper. I love seeing him out there. You know what I love in work? He's got somebody pulled over, he's writing them a ticket. We can't have, at the cost, it's, it's really very difficult for the town to bring on more. We've looked into, we really have, I've looked at cost, it's just, it's costly, very costly. And, and no life is worth the amount that we pay, but you understand. From here down to the lake, we'll have to see where it would go, which side. And I'm not asking for it now, we have to look, we have to work with the state, we have to, and this is, this is a big undertaking. It's that, it really is a big undertaking. And the state's involved, there's money involved, and there's people's property involved. I don't know what the setback is for the state road. It's at least six feet, probably. And we'd have to have a study done to see what kind of utilities would have to be moved in our expense. Good thing we can't apply for the grant this year, I got to tell you, because this is years. Okay, you know, so, actually, she had her hand up first.
I also know that with a lot of this pedestrian safety, I mean, to me, this whole topic is under pedestrian safety, which is something we're all interested in in different areas, but, and I know the state trooper is expensive, but sometimes there are like things, signs you can get up that, that will say, hey, your speed is this. And those might be pretty effective in some of the
We have those. We have them, and we posted them, and, and you've never seen them. So I'll make sure we're...
Yes, my, a question, I understand it takes a lot of planning, you know, to, to do something like this, but it's been done once before, and I just wonder if the work that was done previously in terms of engineering, moving utilities, state setbacks and whatnot, would be applicable to a new application? When a lot of work's already been completed?
Yeah.
Maybe just be edited appropriately, or updated appropriately.
We'll, we'll have to locate that. Yeah. So, I mean, I guess if we had a business district like Mansfield, and you needed sidewalks for the business district, there probably would be double the amount of people in the seats here. Or if it was a neighbor play, my daughter, I was just down outside of Philadelphia, she lives in a little house, and walking my granddaughter around all the sidewalks, they're wonderful, absolutely. But it's a neighbor play. It's a little bit different, so, we will, you know, I'll open it for any other kind of thoughts, but I'll tell you, we'll take a look at what we did years ago, see if we have any of that, how far we got into it. And somebody had their hand up on me. I saw it. No, somebody, somebody...
Somebody in chat.
I think it was Christine Spizito.
62 Double Day Road, I'm having a hard time hearing everyone. I want to speak today in favor of getting a crosswalk and a walkway connecting Pine Street and Ediquan. And I'd be willing to participate in a committee to help get this done.
And that's the other thing. I'd like to walk from my house next to Lebanon down to here, you know? And I see people out there on those roads too. And it's just, I'm not saying that one thing, we won't do one thing because it starts the whole ball rolling, but it starts the ball rolling. Yes.
Few towns around, like Hebron and Mansfield, have been, you know, working away at sidewalk, 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 a little here and there, a little here and there, connecting things, and it makes an incovenantry. And it really makes a big difference after more and more things start to be connected, and it does start to feel more like a neighborhood than like a highway, when there are those, that kind of accessibility.
Yeah, last time we did this, there were a lot of people that were against it, who lived on 87. I don't know if you canvassed those people. I mean, they may come out, there were, I don't know, 150, 200 people at that meeting, it was huge.
I heard that, and I, I wasn't here, but, but everyone that I, I have approached a lot of people, and everyone I have talked to has been positive. I haven't talked to anyone yet who said, I don't want to see that happen. So surprisingly, I mean, it could be that a lot of the trees were removed. It could be that maybe a walk to school thing was, this is more of like for everybody thing. You know, I mean, maybe people didn't want their kids walking to school, or maybe...
I don't think anybody walks to school in Columbia.
They don't. We pay for bus for every child to get to the... And so, and so I can understand why that title might not really sit well with people, right? And maybe your tree is in the way, you have a beautiful tree. And there were a lot of beautiful trees on this road when I moved here that aren't here anymore, so maybe they're not here, and maybe there's a kind of walking path that's not a sidewalk, but a, you know, ground path that would be easier to keep up. I mean, I just think maybe there's ways to explore it.
Like the, like the one around Lebanon Green?
Yeah.
I would just say, you talk to as many people as you can.
You know, put together an informal committee and do a pamphlet or something, and get signatures.
I'm happy to be on a pedestrian safety committee and see what people want to do and try to create confidence. That's what, you know, to, to make it successful.
We have a lot of trails in Columbia.
I know, and I use them all the time.
I mean, we're, we're purchasing open space for a thousand acre park, all the trails you need, and, and the greenways, and the airline trail, and up at Rec. Burns on your own trail.
And you missed my talk last week where I was like so thankful for all of that. And that's part of the reason I moved here, you know, because yes, those are wonderful.
It is the irony of the country life that we use the, in the game, if we're finding, move here, that area, and you have sidewalks, and everybody walks because of sidewalk people outside. We used to live in Haddon, we lived in Haddon, we job and stuff, and you're always saving your life when you're answering the road. Same thing is here, every road in town here are narrow sides, it's, so it's just the irony of the country life that is ironically, you can't tell what's a sidewalk, and you're kind of in a, in a, in a, in a, as a sidewalk. You had it so much busier.
Actually, I tripped so many times. And that's the other thing, maintenance. I know everybody's, oh, the homeowner has to maintain it, they have to maintain it. What if it's not on the homeowner's, what if it's on
State property?
Like past, I guess everybody owns up to the road somewhere, right? I don't know. I honestly, if I own some of that, do we have to maintain it?
In small towns, you have 100 foot. Out here, it's 200 feet, you know? It's not a quarter acre, half acre lot, it's an acre lot. And sometimes it's a lot of garbage, and then, and it's, I had a, you know, it was mine, I lived in, it was a lot, so I've walked with sidewalks, and you shovel, and you pick up, and you swept it, and you, back in the day, picked up all the garbage on it.
Is it possible, I would suggest, like, maybe there's a way that it can be written in as a clause that people, like, when there's snow, it's, it's
There will be a clause.
There, you know, the clouds, I mean, we, I live on 30, on the base, and I would have to, and I do, you know, willing to have sidewalks on my property, but, you know, the clouds come and they make a mountain in front of my house that I'd have a hard time getting for, as much as I'd love to. But, you know, so maybe there ha, that has to be written into it, that, that people don't have to shovel that in the winter, right? Not, not a walkway.
You want them, you're going to want them.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know if you want to use some of those.
I don't know, what town was that? Yeah.
I mean, there is that, because, you know, they're, they're continuously plowing 87, because they have to. So, you know, you go out there, and you shovel, and 10 minutes later, probably come by, buried again.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, do they keep on parable walkways in Lebanon free of snow during the winter? Are they say proper?
Yes, but that's a town green, and they use a snow roller to do it. That's town power.
Yeah, yeah, but they do it, which means Department of Public Works does it.
Yes. But they also have the skating Yes, but they also have the skating rink, that's a whole thing.
Working on. Nine eighty-seven. I, I, I absolutely, I appreciate everybody's comments, yes, Sam.
The reason it fell through that time is nobody engaged the public interest. Yeah, so it came from top debt. And it was the people along Route eighty-seven that opposed that. So, before we get into this, I mean, they would be loving to be able to walk down on an asphalt walkway. But before we get into all the planning, engineering, and expense, we had better have the entire town behind it, or it would be a waste of money.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, because at least the people who. Presumably, about the engineering, will be upset to move everything, you know, and they'll shoot it down. And then we put out money again without cost. So, if you want a roadway, you better get everybody in town behind it. Otherwise, it'll be just like last time.
Anybody else on the chat? No, okay. So, I heard clicking away over here, and I see Mark scribbling and stuff, and believe me, I remember a lot of things that everybody has said, I get it. So, guys, some work to do. It would help if you, if you wanted to gauge the interest. Careful walking door to door.
Let me try to make an outline, so that the questions asked properly.
So many questions.
Yes, that's what I want. If you, if you ask it improperly, you might get an incorrect assumption on what we're offering, so. Let me go to council governments, this is where we belong as a member, this is what they do, they plan, build infrastructure in thirty-eight towns around this area, so let me get their advice first. And I'll sit down with one of their planners. And they'll know the whole grant system back and forth, not only the one I found, but the other options.
And I actually like the idea of a gravel path, better one. It's meant sidewalks are actually easier on the feet.
Anyone else? So I would tell you to, I'm gonna give us some time. And I'll communicate to after we share.
Do we form an ad hoc, do we need to?
Let's, let me crawl where I want here. Let's get, let's work on the questions that we can give to them. Couple weeks? Couple, have for you a couple weeks. I hate leaving something out there and say, we'll get back to you, and then it could be, you know, after my term is up, so, then you're back to square one. So, we'll, we'll get back to you in two weeks, okay? And thanks, so, and who is your?
June, June sixth.
Excellent. So many, so many questions. Someone say with that? New Business, twenty twenty-three Steeplechase Bike Tour. If you, I'm gonna, I'll stop here, if you all would love to stick around, that's great, if you wanted to take off, I'll be there. Are we talking about every subject? She's out.
You got your new guy.
Twenty twenty-three Steeplechase Bike Tour, they're back, listen, sex ones, they always come through, they take care of everything. So I move to approve the twenty twenty-three English People Chase Tour to travel through Columbia on August nineteenth of this year. So, did they give us the same route? Town has received, our town has received the roadmaps and current safety information. Have we received? Yes.
It's not in here, it was in the packet, though, the electronic packet.
Oh, right. Yeah. Okay, for us, it goes. Yeah, it's, it's. Lander's Road, turn, turn left on Route sixty-six east. And you go all the way to Tobacco, Zegler Road, Double Day, that's not the same. Wow.
Wow, that's really.
And that's different. So they go, Johnson, Cards Mill, Johnson, Zegger, Route eighty-seven, Double Day, Chesboro.
And Tobacco.
Yeah, left on Tobacco, so it cuts out of our area.
Okay, I better have been on Tobacco.
That's, that's getting paved part.
What's that?
It didn't really bill. I never went on Tobacco.
Right in the line.
Yeah, you can go right, and it's dirt all.
Oh, yeah, 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 it cuts onto Pine Street.
Yes, it does.
All right.
And it's not worth taking.
Any detail? I've gone up there, I've driven that road.
It's pretty.
I couldn't wear it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Just signature right here, there. Okay, closeout of the American Relief Fund projects that we, I move to approve the closeout of the above listed American Relief Fund projects completed as of three thirty-one twenty-three, and return any balances remaining to the American Relief Fund balance.
Yes, totally.
So we have, of these things, rec. park facility building, done. EPW site survey site been done, roof replacement repaired, done, mini excavator done, working all the time. And self-contain breathing apparatus. And we're returning twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-seven cents back into the relief project funds.
It's so funny. To return money.
Understand?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor? How much do we have as a total then, left?
Not much.
I said to you, do we have a total, and you said, they has a total on. I move to release the funds for budgeted for the annual Fourth of July parade to the Columbia Alliance Club. Why would you do this, if it's budgeted? Why doesn't it automatically?
Well, because they always send a formal letter and you question, so it's just our tradition.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Tax collector suspense. I move to approve the recommenda, I move to approve the recommendation to transfer uncollected property taxes to the suspense tax book as listed. I remember doing this a couple of times.
Right, and if they sit there, and you can always go back and actually collect them, then we find them.
So these are people that have moved out of state?
Moved out, we lost them, we can't find them. So we put them in the suspense list, so more accurately reflects.
At what point do we just say we're not gonna get?
I think they just said that.
We got.
I think this person just talked.
Here, funny.
I just wanna see, because I think, last time we did this, I saw a couple of names on there, people on this.
A lot of them have got a state, but if they stay in the state, doesn't it get reported to the motor vehicle? Because most of it's motor vehicles.
Correct.
You can't register your car.
William Tuanek, of the Tuanek family in town?
It's a lost cousin.
Two thousand seventeen.
Until that lost cousin needs to be approbated or something. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
It doesn't amount to very much.
Nothing on the, on the lake. Okay, appointments and resignations. Deb Fisk, Recreation Director, completion over six month probation. I move to remove Deb Fisk from the six month probation place rather full-time employee. Really, any discussion, she has fantastic depth, she really does. Anybody else?
Her wonderful thing.
Yeah, you're still, you're making a great job.
Yeah, people are really happy.
Yep. All those in favor? Appointed Tom Grant with the Hot River Preserve Committee. Comes on every, everything that has dirt. I move to, yeah, just make that. I move to appoint Tom Grant to the Hot River Preserve Committee, any discussion? All those in favor? I move to appoint Ashley Stryker to the Economic Development Commission.
She was just in the meeting. What's brought?
Can I speak? I'm, I'm terribly, she's recently came to our meeting, and she's great, so I just want to, a lot of energy, something really deep in that group, so hopefully approve her.
Wait a minute.
What do you mean by that?
Three fourths of that group are right here. Everybody's up there with Mark saying, oh, we'll never get better team than this.
She is not right here.
That's really nice.
You gotta forget that.
A decade or two.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? I move to appoint Mark Walters to the Houston Highlands Health District.
Or you could go, Steve.
What are you doing there?
It's a monthly meeting.
What do you do there?
We make sure that we're following all state health codes, and we have proper staffing to service towns' needs for.
And you meet monthly to do that?
Yeah, we get a full report from our health department. Ian from our doctor on assignment. It's a lot fun.
I think you should make a motion to move it to every two months, okay, just for a second. All those in favor? I move to appoint Cynthia Latko as the Payroll Specialist for the start date of five thirty twenty-three. Discussion, I have a discussion, let's talk about this, because now we're gonna, so, just so I know. There's Bev, we had Jill, who was part-time. Correct. And we had Lisa, who was thirty-six hours, correct, okay. So now we have Bev, we have Kara, who's thirty-six hours, and we're, we're adding Cindy's Latko for thirty-six hours, correct.
So we're gaining a halftime?
We're, we're, we're gaining.
I think Lisa was, I mean, Jill was actually thirty hours. Can you tell, Jen?
I think, because we didn't, we couldn't find a word for her to give her. Okay, so, and you're telling me.
Does our payroll specialist do the town and school?
And the school, correct. Payroll specialist works on town one week, the school the next week, the town one week, the school next week, so she always back and forth.
And we still have a service that does.
As she cuts the checks, so what the payroll specialist is, is entering all your time off, all your vacation, all your hours, and then feeding all that information to a payroll service, so the check can get cut, and the payroll service automatically factors in taxes. But the payroll specialist has to know five union contracts to code everything correctly.
So is this a good job, or is this?
No, no, we're replacing Lisa Rose, so it'll probably take six months to learn the job, that's, that is estimate.
So who's been doing it?
That's, that's been Bev, and Kara's been helping a little. So what we've done too is Kara's been given more responsibility in the time off department, which we shifted some of that from Jen over to Kara, because it was consuming, how much of your time did you have doing the time off slips?
One, two, every week.
But there was a lot of complaining during that hour or two. It was not easy. Well, the problem is you were getting it wrong.
Right.
The, the, one of the reasons it's better to have it over in the annex is that they don't have traffic coming in with constant interruptions all day. So it made more sense to move that over to Kara. And we've also cross-trained Kara.
I, 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 I just don't understand why it takes that much time. I mean, there are programs that do payroll. I, I, we do our own payroll for eight people, it takes rich twenty minutes.
You have eight people, though.
Yeah, I understand, how many employees do we have? We have two hundred employees in this town. I understand, I understand, but they're still employees, but, you know, it's set up, once it's set up. And, and their salary, so the school is mostly salary, right? So it's just if somebody isn't in for a day, where you're keeping track of that kind of thing.
I don't know, it's, it's a lot of it there. I just see.
I don't, I used, I don't know, it just seems like.
I just think three people's not enough to do both. And do you find it straight?
Jill's was thirty hours a week.
So we're, we're adding six hours, and right now Kara is easily working those six hours over in this side of the Pine Street.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Can we budget for that?
Yes.
Next is appointments in Marine Patrol, I move to appoint the following individuals to Marine Patrol. Dave Evans, Jay Lee Fagan, Joey Gross, Zoe Roth, Ronald Smith, and Brian Hall. Which one is our man in charge, Ryan Hall?
Are they older, or are they?
It's everyone except Jay Lee Fagan, she's the outlist, but she's worked here for multiple years. So she's not, she's intertwined.
Have you seen the, the training that they're going through?
And they just started, Deb brought in a professional for building competence and teamwork that she's used previously, so that was step one, and I believe that was for the lifeguards. I think Marine Patrol is about to do their training this week.
We went through that.
What's that?
We budgeted the specialists to come in and do that.
The mastermind.
Okay, he sings it, I'm just very surprised, okay. All those in favor hiring these people?
Aye.
I'm you, town administration. Just, I've got a report from our tax collector, you've already collected over ninety-eight percent of our taxes, so that's your, she's had. Super, I just wanted to report that. Also, Memorial Day, we're celebrating Monday, May twenty-ninth, in this, or ten? Nine. So nine o'clock with the caps and the ceremonies at the centers. The legislative update, it's been very painful, there were seven thousand bills submitted, of which four hundred and fifty made it out of committees, and they think two hundred and fifty will become law. But one of the things that could really affect us, they, they, they want to reduce the interest on non-paid taxes, meaning taxes that are late, right now it's a percent and a half a month, they want it dropped into a percent. But the towns and cities are concerned, they like having our tax rate the highest, so that we're the first paid. But the towns and cities are concerned, they like having our tax rate the highest so that we're the first paid credit card companies. So I don't know how that'll shake out. And also there's still a lot of concern that they're trying to move, uh, cancer that you don't have to prove how you got the cancer if you're a firefighter, volunteer, or full-time, but they want to move it to workless comp. And CCM is working hard with the unions to try to move that responsibility into a self-funded fund by the state or by putting a penny on our self-home bills. Penny? Well, we had a penny on the self-home bills, but the state refused to clearly identify what the money was going towards, so it was ruled unconstitutional. So now they're trying to get back into finding a funding source that would fund the cancer. We're fully willing to pay for anyone that gets cancer that's job-related. The challenge is if you don't have to prove it's job-related, then they're worried that it would be like heart and hypertension back when anyone that had a heart attack that was in the, uh, police force that was ruled is because your job. And that actually disrupted a lot of, uh, they, they predict the Colonel would not be able to afford to do this if it was a workless comp. Other towns, I think Vermont went under with having a workless comp. But that's just one sideline they're working on. So I'll, um, I'll bring up the speed as the session gets closer, right now, um, we're also concerned they're going to change car tax again. And also they're threatening to change the value of the property, they want to increase, instead of us taxing on seventy percent of the value, we tax on seventy-five percent of the value. So the state keeps trying to shift more and more to the property value of a house, get it out of cars and put it more on structure. That's, I appreciate really my car's doing. So that's all I have on CCM. And there's, they have the, uh, we, I included in here, uh, the RP, thank you Jim for working with yourself and this committee in the school. And we pulled together the RP, which is due back, uh, June first, June first at three P M. So we sent it out to three applicants of the four, we felt three, uh, really good. It's a good presentation, so we'll see what we get back as a, uh, proposal. And we'll bring to the, we'll, we'll make a recommendation out of the committee and we'll bring it forward. Okay? And then, I also wanted to give you a quick update that we did here back from the state. You know, we, we had questions on speed on Route sixty-six east, uh, need for a crosswalk, um, at I think Pine and Ennequin, uh, that was one question, and we also had, uh, something else, but they got back and said that, well, it was reduced even on Route sixty-six east, better signage on Hunt and West. Oh, Hunt and West, we still feel that when you're coming from Hunt or West, it's hard to see that you're back to Crossahill. So I think that has to be addressed. And also crosswalk, crosswalk on Pine and Ennequin. We do that from state and all those are in the proper departments, we'll wait to hear back from them.
So West Street and what?
West Line. So when you come either from West or Hunt, if you're not paying attention and you don't really see that stop sign, you don't, you can't tell.
Those are not our stop signs, those are the state's stop signs.
Well, we have to work with the state on those stop signs.
Because the one on West Line, that's the one the little girl blew through and two kids were
Right.
And she, she never even had brakes, she just went straight into sixty-six.
And I've been
You travel a lot, you can't see the stop sign?
I don't, I'm a seven, I'm three hours
It's deceptive because it looks like it's one street.
And you can't see sixty-six, it is not obvious you're about to cross the highway at all.
Coming from
If you're not paying attention
Especially West Street, West Street onto Hunt, going that direction, it can just look like it's gone.
Right. If you're daydreaming or texting or doing anything, you're
So if they had a big stop sign, a good reflector, she might have.
Right, I think you need maybe a, like a caution or one that's solar-powered lit that the stop sign actually lights down.
They have some good stop signs, but that
Well, we've asked about those signs down about the curb down there too.
Right, and we're waiting to hear
Again, the state doesn't move too quick.
But it's encouraging, we've got to acknowledge.
They did change that stop sign at one point, remember they made it much bigger?
They used the more, the larger size more, and, uh, I don't know if they have the lollipop red
I don't think they do have the lollipop
We need definitely have that.
That would help, but I think part of the problem might also be there's a telephone pole
Yes.
Kind of
And that might need to be moved back.
We need a traffic light there.
Well, I think that would help a lot, if you had a blinky light, that would, that would be obvious that something's ahead.
That would
I like traffic light, not just a blinker, but
So we requested that too.
Yeah, but nobody wants to stop on that sixty-six.
I know, it just seems like
Every time you stop in Eber, though, if you're going to Eber, you stop several times, like here, we have a few more stops along.
Yeah.
You stop where?
In, in Eber, you have several stoplights along
I understand, they're right in the center of the town at thirty-five miles an hour.
Right.
That's the problem, I, I mean, people around there, you talk about the, the safety and everything, we talk about it. Every time I go to the senior center, which is once a month, and talk to them, I think it's so fast, it's so fast, it's so fast. I know it, you know, give residents a speed strip so we can throw in front of the cars as they goes by.
Actually
People are passing on Route six on the, on the shoulder.
They made it way too wide and way too nice.
Where?
The road, Route sixty-six between the top of the hill and, and center of town is six feet, ten feet wider than it is coming up the hill from Eber. It widens and people hit the top of that hill and go, yeah, this is great, and they're gone, I mean, I've had people fly by me and I'm doing forty-five fifty and they're flying by me. And I've got to the corner, I just pull over, it's like, I'm not gonna, I can't see your headlights, I'm just pulling over.
Right, I also got a word that the, finally the Hop River Trails Bridge has been funded. And the mechanic DOT is authorized to award on the Hop River Road Bridge contract. Authorized to award the Hop River Road Bridge contract, so you have the, the bridge that goes across the road and the bridge goes across
So when's it gonna be started?
The road bridge will not be until after two thousand twenty-six, so we're just now going up a bit, now being two thousand twenty-four. Then we have a two-year touch. But the Hop River Trails Bridge, which is also out to two thousand twenty-six, is least funded yet. That was, they presented that to us in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so it covers the both the trail and
And the road. I also want to give you a heads up in case we make the news, uh, Department of Developmental Services, DDS, is notifying their, that their bargaining units are about to go out of strike, so, um, we reached out to our fire marshal and we'll notify a resident trooper in case the group is picketing at the group.
They would pick it out any second, so, not now, but
Astero, right? Yeah, exactly.
Last winter.
That is all I have, Steve.
Thank you, some correspondence. The words of Father Junior, read it for yourselves.
You could have known, man. It was awesome. You always knew where you stood.
He was trying to speed up the service.
Am I right, Bill? Read it for yourselves. Okay, budget transfers none. Refund, I move to approve refunds totaling nine hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-two cents. Any discussion? Favor, aye. Approving payment bills. I move that we approve the payment and bills totaling one hundred and seventy-five thousand six, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents, consisting of twenty-two, twenty-three regular credit card and paycheck.
Where the sheetrocks for the jar we can on the DPW?
IB movement.
Okay.
Gold coins. We have Rec Park.
So our twenty-seventeen truck had quite a bit of repairs done, huh?
Yes, because we can't buy a new truck.
Where were the AED cabinets going?
Can we step back a minute, what about the truck?
We can't get a new truck.
Do we appropriate it for a truck, right? And we can't find a truck to buy?
No.
So we keep putting money into this one?
Yes.
What do we put into it?
Seven, seven thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Warrings in lines. How much have, we've spent a lot of money on warrings in lines.
Three boats come off
Snap on last year. So this year
You placed them all.
This year at the, where the, uh, line was attached to the anchor, we have a swivel connection there. The board of the boat would swim around, spin around, and it would snap, and they would go, now we have a swivel that we should take care of that problem.
So I, how much have we spent on these warrings that we get a hundred dollars a year for?
Well, you might want to consider raising here.
Well, that was kind of my thought.
Probably could get two hundred.
Okay, just a thought. That we might need to
So they can't bring kayak.
But it was just, I was looking at that going, man, that's a lot of because we spent other, we spent a lot of money last year on the lines, right?
So the disc golf signs were pretty expensive.
They're really nice.
But they made it old. Our professional that was riding us. This would be the nicest disc golf course in that I've played at.
Won't ever be done.
I know, well, may never finish. This close. As long as we don't have a mutiny from the employees.
Are we doing, I see a lot of things, DPW, the heating, the painting, and the sheetrock
It's coming.
Are we on budget?
Yeah, on budget, and that is about to go pick out some verge. So recliners for resting. You should do that.
Resting.
Do you understand recliners? We don't want
Okay. Anything else on the, all those in favor paying bills? It's a citizen. Anything that you want to talk about we haven't heard, or you'd like to say, or make a statement that we haven't already talked about? Board, board member comments? Said nothing. Said nothing. Okay, so at this time, I would like to suspend the board's selectman meeting and enter into executive session. And I would invite Mark Walter and Rob Helstrom to attend. Thank you for coming.
Okay, great.
Where do you live?
Heritage, I might have to talk to everything you was
She started it.
I'm gonna write Heritage on the corner with me.
So the time is, uh, nine, uh, nine oh five. We're going to resume the board's selectman meeting, come out of executive session, no action was taken. An executive session that required a vote, so, uh, with no further ado, I already had board member comments. We are going to, uh, vote to adjourn, all those in favor? At nine oh six P M. Is this Steve, you guys?
You too, Ross.